Good evening and thank you for attending the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM in council chambers. We'll go ahead and start with a roll call. Stephanie Rivers.
Present.
Frey Kombinski is excused. Maria Torres.
Present.
Norma Tiznick.
Present.
Martina Shay.
Present.
Carla Dela Cruz Davila.
Present.
Brittany Davison, present. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three, Review and Approve Minutes from the October Meeting. Any corrections? Sing non, can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a second? Thank you. Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum. If there's anyone in the public who would like to come up to the podium and speak about an item not on the agenda. Agenda item number five, Student Representative Announcements.
Good evening, everybody. This year, our new athletic director, Dante Ortiz, started a unified basketball program. This inclusive team sport emphasizes teamwork and sportsmanship. The team brings together student athletes who volunteer to create opportunities for life skills, discovery, and other sub-separate students to shine on the court. Not only were our student athlete volunteers encouraging and dedicated, but our amazing fan section, full of proud families, students, and staff, made the games even more exciting and memorable. It was inspiring to see some of the highest needs students in the school compete and be part of team, like so many other students who get that experience. This much-needed program was such a success for all students, and I hope to see it expand in the years to come. Thanksgiving school pep rallies are a fun way to bring students and staff together while celebrating the spirit of the season. Many schools use the event to revive old traditions like friendly class competitions, performances from their band and cheer team. These rallies help connect the past and present, reminding everyone that gratitude, school pride, and coming together as a community are traditions worth carrying forward. The excitement always builds toward the much anticipated Thanksgiving football game versus Bartlett High School. Good luck to both teams, and we can't wait to watch all your skill on the field. I truly appreciate everyone who supports us each day, but there is one individual whose kindness, dedication, and unwavering support stands out. Whether she's cheering us on at senior nights or showing up to be part of our school events, she always makes us feel valued and seen. Because of her presence, kids feel more confident and supported. Her impact is meaningful, and on behalf of all the students she has encouraged, we want to thank Ms. Norma Tiznick for her generosity and heartfelt commitment to our school community. These shirts here are a gift on behalf of Southbridge Middle High School. We got them in assorted sizes, so if you need an alternate size, please let us know. With that being said, thank you guys for listening to our updates, and I'm excited to see you guys again next meeting.
Thank you.
One question, is the game here or at Bartlett?
It is at Bartlett this year.
It's at Bartlett. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, Southbridge Cares Presentation. The presenter's running a little late, so can I get a motion to take item out of order? Can I get a second? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, Interim Receiver Updates.
Evening, Madam Chair. Through you to the members. Ladies, nice job. Enjoyed the updates and the positivity. Please feel free to stay and listen, but if you have other engagements like homework or social events, feel free to excuse yourselves.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I wanted to begin by thanking the over 30 employers that came to, if not our first, our first in a long time, job fair at Southbridge High School last Friday. The event was an overwhelming success, and I thank Ms. Kathleen Catterett, who's in attendance, for facilitating that. It was a very positive event, and I think the kids and the employers got a lot out of it. And, you know, everybody lives busy lives, and I went and thanked them personally on that day, but I want to thank them again publicly for taking time out of their schedules to come share with our students a myriad of career opportunities. I want to remind all families that next week is the Thanksgiving break. We have no school after Tuesday, so we have Wednesday off, Thursday, of course, and Friday. I wish the committee and all of our families at home a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I am thankful to be here, working on all of your beheads. We are also beginning this year, again, something that Ms. Catterett is heading up for us, a Parent Academy. Our first session will be December the 4th from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. There are two topics. One will be a primer on PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, and a training on the Aspen Family Portal. We will have childcare, we will have refreshments, and we will have Spanish-language speakers at the event to help facilitate any gaps in communication. Want to recognize Southbridge Middle School. I've mentioned this in prior meetings, but they were only one of 63 out of over 1,800 schools in the Commonwealth to return to pre-pandemic levels of proficiency in mathematics. As such, they've been invited to a convening by the department in early December to talk about and share best practices with other districts. Congratulations. I want to remind all families that we have parent conferences over the next couple of weeks. If you have not made an appointment yet, it's not too late. Please reach out to your child's school. Eastford Road School is on the 19th of November. Charlton Street School is on the 3rd of December. West Street School, also the 3rd of December. Southbridge High School is the 20th of November. Southbridge Academy is the 19th, and Southbridge Middle School is the... I can't read my own handwriting. Mr. House, when is the Southbridge Middle School? First round already happened. Tomorrow's the second round. And finally, I just wanted to talk for a minute. I had included in your packet this evening, Committee Person Shay asked for a spending breakdown for the current school year, which I have included in your packet. It's broken out by object code or location, and I had it broken out into two different categories. Personnel, which is, you know, basically our salary costs, and OTPS, other than personnel services. You know, you can see at the far end of the sheet, you know, I also broke down by percentage what amount of funding is available still in those particular lines. I would encourage the committee to take a look at this over the next week or 10 days and to, you know, I can provide a lot more detail if you so desire. I would ask you to chew on this, take a look at it. If you have questions, I would funnel them through the chair, and I'd ask that you get them to her before we meet on the 1st of December to set the agenda for the December meeting, and I'll be happy to make a more comprehensive presentation based on whatever questions you have or other information you would like to see.
I have to admit that they're much better... Excuse me. Through the chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We're in much better shape than I would have thought at this time.
Yes, we, you know, barring any unforeseen circumstances and, you know, man plans, God laughs, you know, we are on track to, you know, be in fine shape for the duration of the school year. If that changes, you will be the first to know. That's it for my updates.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, Chairwoman's Announcements. I just want to announce that we did receive a letter from our new commissioner today, Pedro Martinez, stating that he was going to renew our current turnaround plan for up to another three years. I know that the committee ourselves, along with other members of the public, have expressed some concern for that, as our goal has been to get out of receivership. Vice Chair Carla and I, as well as our superintendent, our DESI representative, other members of the school, and town councillors, did meet with the commissioner on Friday for a meeting where we discussed what the plan was going to be. You know, and we're going to continue to work on getting a more, hopefully, another list of action items that we need to continue to work on to complete, to continue to work to get out of receivership. So I just want to highlight that even though the turnaround plan is for three years, it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be in receivership for another three years, but we're going to continue to work as a committee to collaborate together, collaborate with our superintendent, MASC for trainings, as well as the commissioner and the town council, to continue to work on getting out of receivership. So I just wanted to hopefully ease some minds and some worries about that. Agenda item number nine, Discussion on Progress Toward Meeting DESI Plan Expectations to Build School Committee Capacity. We will start with you, Norma.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us. For October, I did visit the middle high school on the 31st with Carla, and I didn't ask much questions. I was just there for observing, and it was a good observation. It was Halloween, so it was good to see the kids dressed up for the holiday spirit, but also focused and engaged in their curriculum. And we, I did just finish the... Sorry. I did the conference last week. And my takeaway from the conference was find like-minded people and build a community and execute the mission.
Thank you. Member Shay?
I was supposed to have a meeting to see the libraries at Charlton and West Street, but we had to cancel that, so I will look forward to probably rescheduling that after the 1st of the year. That sounds a long way away, but unfortunately it's really not. I also have, I'm tagging on to a visit that Carla and Brittany are going to have to the elementary schools early in December. I'm really looking forward to that. I hope that as a whole committee, we can have a meeting with the commissioner. I think we need some direct answers at this point from him, but that's, again, down the road. And all I can say is Thanksgiving, go pioneers! Go pioneers!
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, so I continue to meet with Juan from DESI, continue to meet with our superintendent, with Judy. Also met with town councillors Daniels, Lazo, and... And then I also attended the immersion ribbon cutting, which was amazing. I did a walkthrough with Norma for the middle high school, and I do have other dates planned for the other schools. I went to the MASC training. Takeaways from that is, in the open meeting lot, it said that a key takeaway is the importance of maintaining transparency while keeping governmental operations efficient, and how public bodies must follow strict rules around notice, deliberation, minutes, and public access. But also showed how tools like executive session and remote participation help balance openness with the necessary confidentiality and practical functions. I found that interesting. And then we also went to a takeaway from the new member mentoring and onboarding presentation. And for that one, as new school committee members benefit from a guided step-by-step introduction to roles, documents, ethic requirements, and district leadership, and ensuring that everybody feels prepared, connected, and confident in their responsibilities. The other one that I could think of that I also enjoyed was the one that had to do with CPAC, which I did, Norma was also with me during that time, and she is going to be speaking with that presenter to come and do a presentation for our CPAC parents, because it's definitely needed, and she was really amazing. And then we also, I also went to the commissioner meeting to meet him for the first time, and I also met him during the MASC conference as well. That is all. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Rivers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I completed my tours of the schools. I toured Charlton Street, West Street, and Eastford Road back at the end of October. And Eastford Road seems to have one of the best programs that I've seen out of all the schools, so kudos to them for all their hard work, especially with attendance. Their preschoolers who don't receive transportation through our bus company have the highest attendance out of all the kids over there, so kudos to the preschoolers and their families. I also noticed during my tours that our school system has some of the schools, three of the schools, I noticed, where the classroom doors are locked during school hours, so I'm working to gather more information on why that is, because the information I've been receiving is pertaining to during lockdown events, so still gathering information on that. I wasn't able to attend the conference due to personal issues that arose, and I really wanted to attend the conference, so next year, hopefully, I come back to school committee. And let's see, what else am I doing? Other than that, just I'm continuing to work on training and getting that out of the way for new members. And I've scheduled a meeting with several of the town councillors to continue with collaboration to build capacity for school committee. And hopefully, in the coming future, the new commissioner, Pedro Martinez, decides to have another visit to Southbridge, and this time meets with the entire school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Torres?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today with us. I also attended the MASC conference. It was amazing. There was a lot of great training, a lot of insight. The things that I took back with me was a training on classes of tomorrow. That was great. All the participants gained a clear understanding of how the technology can impact student learning, educator practice, and district operations. So it was very inspirational and an insight to help our district prepare for the classrooms of tomorrow. Also, too, it was, one of the trainings I did take was also using the data to close the achievement gap. Again, it's really great to find and use the public data and resources to identify gaps in our educational opportunities and achievements, and understand where that data comes from. And also, we learned on viewing trends over time, compare your district with others, and explore how data can inform your educational programs and policymaking. So it was very informative. Also, another training that was very impactful was also for special education and financial issues. So that was great as well. That workshop identified critical resources, tragedies, and practices that can help effectively and efficiently control the negative impacts of special education finances, while at the same time ensuring the students and their families that they're going to be getting the proper education that they need. Also, too, being a techie person with my engineering background, of course, I did take some classes on project-based robotics and AI assistant teacher measurements as well. So it was very informative, and I'm very grateful that I had the opportunity to go. And addition to that, I've been also working with other team leaders and meeting with Mr. Mitsker and Ms. Judy as well, and Gregory, who's the ELE Dual Language Director, as well as Kathleen, and I just want to say thank you as well for everything and for taking the time to meet with me in regards to discussing the Outpack. And so, yeah, I'm excited for the future and more to come. And yeah, that's what I have for this month and more to come for next month. School visits.
Thank you. As Vice Chair mentioned, her and I have been continuing to meet with our superintendent for our agenda meetings, meeting with Juan from DESI. We had our meeting with the commissioner on Friday. We also met with the Chair of the Town Council, Scott Lazo. I also attended the MASC conference. My main takeaways were learning about how mental health is being addressed within our school system throughout the Commonwealth, as well as learning about different assessments and tools that are being used to support district goals and ensure equity with our students. And I think the other biggest takeaway, which I had mentioned last year when I went, was really just being able to connect with other school committee members from across the Commonwealth, as well as superintendents, to better understand what they're doing in their district and what's working for them, and how we can potentially utilize some of those best practices as well as we're building capacity. So it was a really great conference, and I hope that next year we continue to have more members being able to attend. And so I also want to thank MASC for covering through the cost of three of our members to be able to go. Agenda item number 10, Vote for Subcommittee Chair for our Policy Subcommittee. At this time, I'd like to see if any of the three members of the Subcommittee are interested in being Chair. You can just raise your hand. Anyone else? Okay, so Martina is our new Chair for the Policy Subcommittee. At this time, I would like to make a motion for a five-minute recess while we wait for Nadia to arrive to complete her presentation. So, can I get a motion? Can I get a second? She said so moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. I'd like to make a motion to return to session.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our superintendent would like to introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the members. It's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce our guest here this evening, Dr. Nadia Ward from Clark University. Nadia has been a champion for the Southbridge Public Schools. You know, the work done on the CARES project by her and Judy Mazanet and, you know, Kelly Williamson before she left, and their respective teams have been highly impactful for our kids. So appreciative of, you know, their assistance with our multi-tiered systems of support. And as discussed at last month's meeting, we have the first in all schools, public schools in Massachusetts, sensory immersion room, which is part of the Tier 3 work that Dr. Ward and the team from Clark has helped us engage in. And on a personal note, it's just been a real privilege getting to know you and work with you. And I'm grateful for having had the opportunity to know you and work with you, and I look forward to continued work together. The floor is yours, Dr. Ward.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for this distinct honor to come and talk with you about our partnership with Southbridge Public Schools. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the principal, Stefania Dasette, who's here, who's also been a wonderful supporter. Do you want to say a couple of things?
Thanks, Dr. Ward. Hi, I'm Stefania Dasette. I think I've met and spoken to each and every one of you by this point, and looking forward to a few visits that are put on the calendar. Nadia is going to be doing the bulk of the presenting during this time, but we prepared this a bit together, and we were talking last week about how we wanted to frame this project. And Nadia will speak more about it, but for some table setting, we were reflecting on why this partnership has really worked, so to speak. I think a lot of partners want to work with schools, especially high-poverty schools, that are working on transforming their outcomes. And so the work that we're doing with Dr. Ward and Haddock is different compared to other folks I've worked with before, or folks who have wanted to work with us, in that they are really invested in immersing themselves in the community and the context that we're in. So it's not just a formula that they want us adhering to or prescribing to us. We have spent a lot of time relationship-building over the last year. This is our second year working together. And I think we have shared values about what a healthy school looks and feels like. And so, you know, two years ago, the work at the high school was, you know, we had this longer-term vision about providing a high-quality education where all students could graduate with an education that equipped them with the power of choice. But the first thing that we needed to do, and this is when I met Nadia, my first-year's principal, was create a school that was safe emotionally and physically. And so having that shared understanding of what was really important for young people made a big difference. I know that sounds like a reasonable thing to say, but it's not always a shared value. And so I'm very, very appreciative for Nadia's listening ear. Is she someone that I look up to quite a bit? So I'm really excited for her to share about this really special work within the context of some really good work that's happening at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let me share a little bit about myself with folks, members of the committee here. My name is Nadia Ward. I am a professor at Clark University. I'm also a licensed clinical and community psychologist, and for the last three decades, I have been engaged in this work around urban school reform and thinking in partnership with schools and school districts in different parts of the country about how we come together in true partnership to co-create interventions that really speak to the needs of the community that we're serving. And so let me just tell you how, you know, our origin story with Southbridge. We've, I've had a really wonderful working relationship with the Health Foundation of Central Massachusetts. Amy Shay is the CEO and President of the Foundation. Jenny Blake is the Vice President of Programs. They knew about the work that we were doing at Clark, primarily in our interest in developing behavioral health interventions that support young people, specifically young people of color. And we were also creating technology, behavioral health technology. And they thought, you know what? What you're doing is kind of neat. We know some folks in Southbridge that might be open to this idea, what you're doing, with thinking about how to be creative in terms of addressing issues that came from post-pandemic concerns with the mental health crisis and what young people needed. And they said, how about the two of you guys kind of get together and just see what could be possible? See what could happen out of a potential relationship? And it was in 2022, the summer of 2022, that I met Dr. Williamson. We had a conversation about the district's needs and what Clark could potentially provide, and then it went from there. We together said, we want to do something with the foundation. We applied for their Synergy Initiative grant, their Round Six. I have to share with you all, that is a very difficult grant award to receive from them. And so, but it speaks to, as what Stefania said earlier, kind of a real meeting of the mind about how it is that we could work together in partnership, and so that was super special. And so the other amazing thing that I just want to share about the foundation and how it works is, as you all probably have read and appreciated, it's a five-year initiative, $2 million, and the idea is that you give the awardees enough time and space to figure it out. So the first year was simply just planning. And as Stefania mentioned, it was really about our listening deeply to the needs of what the school community wanted, really understanding the needs of students, the needs of the community. We spent a lot of time talking to different key stakeholders. And then, once we kind of figured out what it is that we could do to support, it was about co-creating what the plan was going to be together. Not the university coming in and saying, we have all the answers, but rather, here's what we have to offer. Would that match and fit with what you all need? And so from there, Year Two was piloting, which is where we are right now. And then Year Three and Four is implementation. Year Five is when we look at the results. Five is when we look at the results and see our impact. So what I wanted to do today with you all was to share a little bit about our model, specifically about the interventions that we've developed, offer you the opportunity to ask questions, and to see kind of where we take the conversation from there. So as I just mentioned, I shared a little bit about the value of school-community partnerships, our relationship with the Health Foundation, what we as a university bring to the table, and then Southbridge Public Schools. One of the things that I can share in the 30 years that I've been doing this work is that immediately what we begin to look for is true commitment on the part of central office administrators to join us in the work. Because without that commitment, nothing else happens. I will share that in working with Jeffrey Vilar, and now the current superintendent, that immediate buy-in was there from the beginning. And so we knew that with that commitment and dedicated time and effort, 100% effort of staff on both sides working to make this happen, that made our work that much more seamless. So buy-in from central office administrators, thinking about district readiness, what it is that we needed to do to get ourselves kind of together to engage in this work, co-creating the plan of action, those three bullet points actually took us two years to accomplish. And then finally, engaging in implementation. Should we be awarded December 15th, we'll begin implementation in January 2026. And then it's about monitoring progress and evaluating impact. Many of you on the committee may have seen this upside-down pyramid. It's, what we kind of think about in terms of our approach is a multi-tiered systems of support framework, which means we think about how do we implement interventions that are going to support young people where at Tier One, all students are going to have access. It's like level-setting. Tier Two, it's programs that we know that will help and support young people that need small groups, after-school programs, mentoring, et cetera. And then Tier Three are those programs that we know where young people have been diagnosed with a mental health concern, and they need a little bit of extra support. So that's the framework that we're going to use as I share with you the interventions that we've developed. The first, social-emotional learning, the MAX program. It's what we call our Tier One intervention, where all our ninth graders are engaged in conversation with our team in implementing the MAX program. The MAX is an SEL program, a social-emotional learning curriculum, that actually highlights the five pillars of what the, of what research says is important for the development of SEL skills for young people. And they are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. We deliver this work in the context of the classroom. We've partnered with Mr. Buchanan, who is the health and wellness teacher, and we push into health and wellness two days a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, for all periods of ninth-grade students that we work with. Interestingly, in this approach, it also, the curriculum, in addition to SEL skills, has a very strong early college awareness focus as well. The idea being that we want young people in early as ninth grade to be thinking about post-secondary opportunities for them. College is an option. One of the things that blew me away when I walked into the building in the high school, QuinSig Community College was right there. Love that. And so we have the opportunity to bring our undergraduate students, there are three of them, Nate, Hannah, and Ariel. They come into the classroom, they work with Mr. Buchanan, delivering the curriculum to the students on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And what we love about that opportunity is that the message that we're trying to convey, we've got young people closer to their age. I always say, I think I'm kind of cool, but I'm not. They prefer to talk to the students, for sure. And so Nate, Ariel, and Hannah come together, and they actually engage with those young people and share with them their life story. They look like them, similar life stories and backgrounds, but also they are kind of embodying the possibility of what they themselves can do. So through MAX, we have that wonderful modeling that's happening with our undergraduate students. And the other beautiful part is, we're just not talking to them about what college could be. We bring those ninth graders to campus, to Clark University. They spend the day with us. They take tours of campus. They play games. They love karaoke. They love the food in the dining hall, french fries and ice cream. What can you, like, whatever. We want them to enjoy themselves. But the opportunity for them to see themselves on a college campus and know, this is a possibility for me. And so we really, really are excited about being able to make those inroads with young people. This is just a slide that shares a little bit about the core content area that we're doing in the classroom with the students. We talk to them about managing that transition from middle school to high school, academic success, values, how to resolve conflict, managing high school transitions, and building community connections. We spend a lot of time training our undergraduate students as well. They spend two hours with me every Monday, talking about the curriculum, but more importantly, what are the most appropriate ways that we know in the literature is best in terms of our engaging young people? That's MAX. Number two, the second-tiered support that we offer is the MyPEACE mobile application. Long story short, it's wraparound services in the palm of your hand. We wanted to engage the counseling department, the adjustment counselors, the school counselors, and support them in the, in the caseloads that they were serving, knowing that they were high, and saying, we want to offer you a more efficient and effective way to think about how you can offer supports to young people, behavioral health supports to young people. The app does these four things. We want young people, parents, educators, counselors, to understand those common behavioral health concerns that young people bring with them to school: anxiety, depression, substance use, suicidality, ADHD, all of those things that we know that young people have questions about and have concerns about. So there's ways in which we have the app, we have learn screens, as it were, which offers real-time, curated, evidence-based information on what anxiety is, for example, what are the signs and symptoms, but more importantly, what you can do right now to find some support. We don't want young people going on TikTok to find out what they need to do to address their behavioral health needs. So we've put it right there for them. The app is available on their Chromebooks, and we work with the students in terms of mental health literacy, engaging them around the mental health topics that they're, they're interested in. We also want young people to pay attention to how they're feeling. And so there's a way in which they do a feelings check-in on the app. Universal screening, super important. Nationally, we're talking about what are the best ways that we can actually screen early and in a preventive way, addressing the needs that young people bring to school. So the app allows for universal screening. Also in the app, we have a social services directory. So a counselor can actually go online and find, whether it be mental health supports and services, recreational supports and services, legal supports and services, housing, food, whatever, you plug in your zip code, all of that information is available to you in real time in the community in which you're living. So we love giving counselors and students and parents access to that information. And then there's the opportunity to coordinate care with developing action plans in the app. We also have digital tools that young people can use, breathing, meditation, mindfulness in their work with their counselor, right? And then for administrators, what we are super excited about is the app has the data analytic dashboard that lets you know, keeps your finger on the pulse, how kids are doing, how they're feeling, what are the issues that are coming to fore. But more importantly, and I think this is the piece that folks are super excited in terms of what we're doing here in this, in this district, is the ability to progress monitor. So it's one thing to say, we're providing services to young people. It's another thing to say, we're providing services, but we're also seeing recidivism rates. We're seeing the numbers of young people who have challenges around anxiety and depression, et cetera, go down because we're actually able to use that data course-correct when things come up, so that we can better serve young people that we're working with. Finally, the sensory immersion room. This is the, it's a Tier Two and Tier Three intervention. And this is a thing that you all have seen more recently, covered in the news and in the media. We're super excited about it. But it's a way in which we have been using technology again in a really innovative and creative way. We know that sometimes young people come to school stressed, for whatever reason. Maybe something happened at home, maybe something happened in the community, maybe something happened at school. And they've got big emotions that they need to address. The sensory immersion room allows for young people to learn about how to manage and cope with some of those big emotions and become regulated in such, in such a way that they can get back into the classroom and be ready to learn. So the room provides a calm, soothing space for young people, to help them regulate emotion. This is exactly, actually a picture of the room. It's beautiful with the cherry blossoms there. The technology in the room is basically customizable to students. So if you're working with a student and they've undergone what we call a sensory assessment, you can actually program the room so that it matches the sensory profile of the student. So if rainfalls and waterfalls and rainforests are your thing, you can kind of program waterfalls and rainforests and create the lights and the smells and all of that that goes in, into the planning of the session with students in the room. Here's a thing that we didn't anticipate. Who is that? How about that? Judy Mazanet enjoying that room. What we also found in our conversations with counselors more recently, and also in other rooms that we've installed, which was an indirect effect for us, we knew that the students were saying that they felt good about being in the room. They felt calm. They felt, you know, regulated. But what we didn't anticipate were the counselors or the practitioners also in the room doing the work with students, they too felt better being in that calming and space, in that calming space, and felt like they were being more productive and doing the work with students in that space. So we're really excited about how virtual reality and all the sensory equipment that's in there can be used as another tool and resource for counselors in their work with young people. And so already they have shared with me, we have what we call a community of practice. We get together once a month and do more in-depth training on how to think about coordinating care and the use of the room with the students. And in our community of practice, last time we met last month, they mentioned that they'd noticed, A, for students who are connected with their counselor, they come to school earlier and on time to engage with their counselor in the sensory immersion room, which is wonderful. Two, classroom removals, they've noticed that for those students that they're working with, those numbers have gone down as well. And that's only been in four short weeks. I can only imagine what's going to happen in the next year. And so a lot of thinking, planning, discussing ways in which we can use all three of these interventions in our work with young people. So we're very excited to be able to share that it is actually Southbridge that has the benefit of what it is that we're doing. And quite honestly, in our last conversation with the foundation and in the application that we recently submitted, they've already been asking us, you know, Southbridge can be a model for the rest of the state. How are you thinking about developing a resource toolkit that you can share with other school districts who may be inclined to do the same kind of work that Southbridge is doing? And so that's a wonderful compliment to know that people are paying attention. They're looking at the work that we're doing and seeing as, seeing it as a model for other districts around the Commonwealth. Finally, the other thing that we're excited about, in the fall of this year, we started a master's program in school psychology. This is kind of our small attempt to be able to address the workforce issues. There are so many more young people that need support and so few counselors, psychologists, behavioral health practitioners writ large, that are able to meet the need. And so we started this school psychology program in order to kind of begin to address those issues. So we're excited that Nate, currently working in Southbridge, wants to participate next fall in the master's program so that he can actually come back to Southbridge and potentially be a school psychologist. We love that. We love that. So super excited about that. And the cohorts that come through, already talking about ways in which we can be leveraging their talent to support the work that's happening in the district. And with that, I'm going to allow you to ask me questions.
Thank you. Do any of you members have questions? Vice Chair Dabala?
Through you, Chair. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for doing this. I went to the presentation of the opening of the immersion room, and I just thought it was amazing. I want one in my room. And the app, it seems amazing, too. I wish we had that, too. I'm a social worker myself by trade, so I really appreciate this being here for our students. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Principal Dussette. Thank you, our superintendent, for making this all happen. I really appreciate all your efforts and everybody that's been involved with it. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. It's been a privilege. It's been an honor and privilege to do this work in Southbridge. Yes, please.
Member Shea?
Are all the students, can they all avail of this, or is it, is it a, a specific group at this time?
That's a wonderful question. So the, the, the work that we are also doing is trying to create an evidence base for impact. And so what that means is, right now, we are doing a consecutive cohort model. What that means is, every group of ninth graders that come in have access to these resources, right? As they move in consecutive grade levels, we bring on another cohort of young people. So we have a comparison group or control group, which are the current juniors. These are young people that before we got this award, got this opportunity, they haven't received any of the services that we've just described here. So we want to be able to, each, with each incoming cohort, be able to look at, how are the resources that we're providing actually having a positive impact on each consecutive cohort of young people coming through within and between grade levels, right? And so by the time we're done with the project in three years from now, what is that, 2019, some, 2029? 2029. Wow. We will have implemented the, the program with all students in, at the high school level. And the hope is that with that data and information, we can talk about sustainability. How do we sustain all the good work that we've done thus far? But the idea, we've doing, we're doing that in a way that we can begin to look at outcomes, what's working, what's not. Is all of these things, are they helping to improve psychosocial outcomes for young people, as well as educational outcomes for young people? So are we seeing more classroom engagement? Are we seeing fewer disciplinary incidents? Are we seeing better attendance? Are we seeing on-time grade promotion? Are we seeing better academic performance? So we want to be able to look at all of those things in a way that we're comparing within-group and between-group opportunities with the cohorts.
So basically, right now, you're starting with the ninth graders?
Yes, and we follow them through every single year.
Yes, and then next year, it'll be the ninth and the 10th graders.
Exactly right. Right. So right now, we have ninth and 10th graders that we're currently working with.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other questions?
I just want to echo what Vice Chair Dabala said about, you know, addressing our students' mental health and this amazing program. And I look forward to hearing in the next couple of years what, what the data shows.
Absolutely. Look forward to coming back and hopefully presenting some really good data to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Ward.
Agenda item number 11, next scheduled meeting is December 9. Agenda item number 12, adjournment. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned.